All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the County Commission Board Meeting for today. It is, I'll get my notes together here. Commissioner Lynch was so nice to remind me I'm dilly-dallying out there in the audience. All right, Thursday, September 13, 2018. It's 9:01, and we'll call a meeting to order. This morning, we got Pastor George Fredericks from J. First Baptist Church here to lead us in prayer. And I'll ask that Commissioner Parker lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please rise.
Let us bow for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you once again, and Lord, I just ask for your wisdom in all of the dealings for Santa Rosa County here at the County Commissioners' Meeting. May your will be done always, not just here, but in other parts of the state, and may you continue to shed your blessings. We also lift up to at this time those in the Carolinas who are going through hardship with this hurricane. May you place your hand of protection on them also, but especially today as we have this meeting. May your wisdom be given, and may things be done in appropriate manners. And we ask all of this in Christ's name. Amen.
Good morning, gentlemen. I pledge my nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. This time, we'll move for approval of the minutes of the August 23 regular meeting and the August 23, 2018 special rezoning meeting. Any changes need noted on that? Seeing none, move without objection. At this time, I'd ask everybody if you will, please put your cell phones on a silent position like I didn't do the other day. All right. To start, to my right, with Commissioner Williamson, approval of today's agenda. Any add-ons?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynch?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gentlemen, Mr. County Administrator?
Yes, sir. Just one item that we'll add for action to today's agenda is an agreement addendum with the Santa Rosa County Fair Association. There were copies left at each of your places, and we have copies at the table with the agendas for the public. This is an addendum to allow utilization of a tractor that was purchased last month. We received that tractor down at Public Works, and rather than have it sit in the Public Works yard not being used for two weeks, we wanted to get this agreement approved and get that tractor delivered. So that will come up. If we could add that to the regular admin agenda as item number three on admin.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from the Assistant Administrator or County Attorney?
Nothing.
Jane, anything? Donnie? Oh, Donnie's standing. Okay. Anything? All right. All right, we'll move forward. We'll set that as the agenda. Presentations today. We got a fire hydrant update. We had some discussion the other day about a fire hydrant that wasn't functioning, so staff took it upon themselves to go ahead and review what the consistency is of the fire hydrants that we have compared to the fire hydrants that aren't functioning. Dan, I'll turn that over to you. I don't see Brad out here, so I'll turn it over.
Mark has got the update. He's been working with Brad and with the GIS department.
All right.
All right, good morning, gentlemen. A question from a citizen came up on Monday about an inoperative fire hydrant, so we teamed up with our GIS department and also emergency management and ran the data. The image that you have here in front of you, I know it's a little bit difficult if you're out in the audience, depicts the number of inoperative fire hydrants right now. The total is displayed on the screen is actually 30. However, our folks have already reached out and found out that two of those are actually in service. Just to give you some perspective, we have 28 hydrants that are currently out of service. That is a very small percentage, and I'll go ahead and display the image with all of our hydrants that are actually within the county. And you'll see the total at the bottom of the screen is actually 6,276 hydrants. So the inoperative to operative is less than 0.45 percent of the total number of hydrants are inoperative right now. There are green dots and red dots. The only difference there is not inoperative and operative. The red dots depict the typical fire hydrant, the green, or what's called flush hydrants, and our emergency management folks have informed me the flush hydrant is typically at the end of a line or at the turn, and a flush hydrant is used to drain silt and contaminant out of the line. So as I said, we only have 28 hydrants that are listed as inoperative right now. Our GIS and emergency management are reaching out to the different water utilities and requesting updates from them. Some of the hydrants are actually hydrants that are placed that are not active. In other words, water is not provided to them. Additionally, Commissioner Cole, you asked about the dry hydrants. I've sent that question out to staff as well to find out the status on that. But again, thanks to our GIS department, very, very helpful in depicting this, and we'll continue to track that and ensure that correct status is reported.
Okay, great.
That's all I have.
Good work. Appreciate that. And I'm sure that gives an additional layer of comfort to our citizens, especially at a time when we've had to raise the MSBU for our fire protection. But you can see that everybody's working in correlation with each other. Our GIS department, our emergency services, and all our water purveyors and the fire departments are working collectively to make sure that citizens have the best possible safety in response to these situations. So, thank you again.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to add, this is not something that we went and did just because a question was asked on Monday. This is something that the staff maintains and is reported to emergency management on a regular basis. This is just a data poll of information that's available.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Parker?
Just one question. I believe Mr. Murray summed it up that maybe we'd have to come back, but any clarification as to whose responsibility it is to address these fire hydrants? It seemed like that was the main concern the other day, was not so much the number of fire hydrants, but who's responsible for, I believe, what the citizens were getting at, the fire department or Pace Water System?
The water purveyors are the ones that are responsible for any repairs that need to be conducted and installation of new hydrants and things like that. The fire department does conduct checks and some preventative maintenance, but the water purveyors are the responsible party for any repairs.
Would it be possible, you think, before the next set of meetings that you could touch base with Pace Water to find out what their plans of actions are to resolve these and just make sure that there's not the infighting that was conveyed on Monday's meeting?
Yes, sir. In fact, that's what we're doing. Reached out to Mr. Boutwell. He's going to get back with our GIS and emergency management department when he returns from travel.
Any further questions? Seeing none, then that was simply an information item, so thank you again for staff taking care of that for us. All right, consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda for the administrative committee?
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the consent agenda, we wanted to talk about the estuary program and the grant award.
All right, sorry, forgot we put that in there. All right, Erica, if you'll... Well, this is some information about the estuary program that we're standing up in correlation with Escambia County, and Erica, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, that's correct. We have some great news today. I think many of you are aware that for the better part of a year, the Bay Area Resource Council devoted their time to preparing a proposal in response to the competitive RFP that was issued through our Restore Pot Two. The RFP was for $2 million to stand up an estuary program. A few months back, we received notification that the Perdido-Pensacola Bay watershed was awarded the grant funding, and if anyone is at all familiar with Restore Projects, they know that it takes months and months and months to get those agreements through. We recently finally have executed that agreement, and so last week, there was a check presentation from the EPA, who is the host agency through Restore Pot Two, to Escambia County, who is the host agency administering this grant program. We're very excited to get started with this, and I would like to share that with you all today. We have our check here, so we can do our own check presentation, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Commissioner Parker and Commissioner Cole. I know Commissioner Cole, or I believe Commissioner Cole was actually one of the founding members of the Bay Area Resource Council, and so I think that this is the culmination of years and years of hard work on Commissioner Cole's part and on the other representatives, the volunteers, the staff, the elected officials that participate in all of these programs related to our estuary. So on that note, I have a giant check in the amount of $2 million that we'd like to present to Commissioner Cole today.
All right. Go down and get a picture. Come on, y'all, come on.
I had to bring home my kids to sleep last night. They wanted to...
Although the name of the program is Pensacola and Perdido Bay, it does encompass Blackwater and East Bays, so it's all-inclusive dollar estuaries in the two county areas. So, thank you. All right. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. The administrative committee items, economic development items, engineers report, public works, and budget and finance, we're all covered at the meeting on Monday. And is there any changes or additions or comments that we need to make to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
Probably should have asked Erica before she left, but Dan, would you give us a brief update on the Triumph meeting yesterday for the Whiting Aviation Park?
Yes, sir. In the Triumph meeting yesterday, our term sheet was approved, and we were moving on to the next step, which is finalizing a grant agreement. We hope to be able to accomplish that prior to the next Triumph board meeting where they would approve that agreement, but we will await that draft in the next several weeks from the Triumph staff.
Comments or questions? If not, I'll move the consent agenda without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Item one under administrative committee is the state and federal lobbying services. This is a discussion of renewal contract with Edmund Graber Governmental Affairs, Johnson and Blanton Governmental Affairs. Comments or questions? Any reason we had...
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
Just wanted to say that I do see value in having Graber and his team stay on, especially with their relationships with the EPA Director and the benefits it could provide, and as well as Johnson and Blanton, my experience with them is they've been very good partners. That said, I would love to encourage the board and staff to look at some type of performance measures or some way to, I know that it's pretty much the money that you bring back is how you're evaluated in your performance as a lobbyist, and in the last couple of years, the $150,000 for the Miracle League was a huge win for Santa Rosa County, but if you add up the last two years, you're probably more, were probably more in lobbying fees than we were in money that was returned. So it was a tough year, especially two years ago. I know that not many counties brought home really anything, so I'd say these comments, just having, you know, an eyes-wide-open approach of how lobbyists are evaluated year to year, because it is an extraordinary investment, and we want to make sure that they're giving us some type of metric of bringing the bacon back home, if you will. So just some comments there as we move forward with continuing their services.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I believe as you were about to state, the only reason it's on regular agenda is I said I didn't quite have the knowledge level. I think Commissioner Williamson may have put it a little bit more eloquently, is I just, at this time, I just don't have enough knowledge of knowing where we're getting the benefit of $144,000 a year worth of lobbying services, and some of it could be sort of my naivety of thinking, you know, that we are the lobbyists, and I'm very fortunate to have good relationships with our congressmen as well as state representatives and senators, and have always felt like they've been open to phone calls. So I think maybe Commissioner Williamson probably put it in a better way than in the future if I had ways that I could show, here's where we definitely know they helped us. You know, I know they're absolutely going to take credit, and I'm not saying that that's not credit due over the Miracle League, but I've also talked with some of the folks in the State House that don't feel that that was done exactly because of, just because we had lobbyists, and, you know, I think maybe in the future, if we could look at exploring, I don't know if it would even be possible to partner in with maybe the City of Milton's lobbyists for cost savings or other things, but I just can't support the cost just because I can't explain at this time to the citizens in a way that I, you know, I'm able to say, here's why we're spending the money and here's the benefit.
Commissioner Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think when you're talking about performance metrics for lobbyist services, you can't look at one year or two years. You have to look at a longer-term investment in their services, because the projects that we really need the lobbyists on are those large projects that take years to develop. And it's not the fact that we need the lobbyists to contact Senator Broxson or Representative Williamson, it's the other senators, the other representatives over in Tallahassee that we typically don't have those personal relationships with. We can reach out to our local delegation. We all have great relationships with them, and they're very responsive, and they carry a lot of water for us over in Tallahassee. But it's those other doors in the Senate Office Building that we need help opening, and I think they provide an invaluable service in that. And again, it's not the Miracle League or any one small project in particular, it's the projects that have developed through the years that they have assisted us with that we have to look at. And we can get staff to go back and look at a five-year snapshot of what the return has been on our lobbying services, and I think you'll be impressed with what we've brought home.
Commissioner Salter?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Lynch. I support both of these entities continuing to represent Santa Rosa County, especially the Graber firm up in Washington, DC. There's a lot going on up there nowadays. We need to have boots on the ground. A good example is unfortunately the passing of Senator McCain, who was the chairman of the Armed Services Committee. He now, that position will now go to Senator Enhoff, I believe it's Oklahoma, and Graber has a personal relationship with that senator and the staff, so it's invaluable, especially on our military side, so I support both entities. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that my comments were made, and I support both of these entities, and I share Commissioner Lynch's comments. You know, if you look at that snapshot, you know, look at three years ago with $8 million for beach restoration and $650,000 for Camden Outfall, and it was a great year, so I know from year to year, it can vary, but as you start looking at the last trend for the last two years, that would be something that is not necessarily moving in the right direction. I think that the federal lobbyist, Ed, is definitely somebody that on these longer-term deals, it's a little bit different than the Tallahassee side. The Tallahassee side is almost year-budget specific. You know, we're making a specific ask for bringing back some money to help and support with a specific project a lot of times. So I support both of these groups. I think they do a great job for us for all the reasons that have been mentioned. I just think to make that argument to the public, we need to have a way to better take a look at that, and maybe it's what Commissioner Lynch had mentioned, providing more of a three-to-five-year snapshot instead of just a moment in time. So I would definitely support both of these for this upcoming budget cycle.
And Commissioner Parker, just to let you know, when I was on the board and we started looking at lobbyists, I felt the same way. It takes some time to ingest all that and reach out and get help from these lobbyists and, you know, you may have a project that they can help you with, and because I thought very much the same way. That's our job. We ought to be in Tallahassee lobbying and seeing a little more, not being able to be in DC all the time lobbying or not having a direct relationship with DC, but over the years, I think, you know, we've, as Commissioner Lynch had said, if you look at the overall, you start to become more aware of, you know, how important it is, because they're there every day walking them halls. And sure, Jared and Doug are over there doing it, but they've got a lot on their table, so when we have somebody site-specific for our projects, let us know if something's slipping, something we need to do, somebody we need to call, or something that we're not even aware of that they can bring to the table. And I like the idea of being able to put that all together and say, hey, here's what we spent over five years, but here's what we got back in five years.
Mr. Chairman, I'll wrap it up with saying I am by no means taking a cut at either one of these firms. I don't have a way of personally knowing at the moment if they're the best firms in the world or the least effective, so it's not that at all. It's just, and honestly, I'm going to say, Commissioner Williamson said it better than me again, it's just, I'm not able to substantively convey that if I was in Walmart and somebody comes up and says, why are you spending $144,000 a year plus travel expenses for lobbyists? I can't, and so maybe that's my downfall, but I know some folks even have an in-house person that they can use, and they travel, you know, a portion of the year, but they stay here, and, I don't know, maybe those are options that before this time next year, staff could at least explore some of the other counties, and I know just for one that I met when I was at NACO out in California, and they had an intergovernmental person, and that was basically their in-house lobbyists, but then they could work for the county throughout the year. But maybe they could just do a better job next year with, and I'm not saying they didn't do a good job, but helping me to have a better grasp of it, but that's the only reason. It's not nothing negative about these firms, it's just right now, I'm not able to grasp, especially when you hear about all the needs that we have right here local. I don't, I don't know that the citizens of my district would feel real great about it when they're, you know, constantly talking about traffic and infrastructure and all, but, but again, I'm going to try to do a better job myself by next year of hopefully being able to wrap around it.
All right. At this time, then, I'll move this item number one under the administrative committee without objection. Hearing none, so...
I'll object.
Okay. We've got an objection? Second?
Second.
All opposed? All right. Let the record show that Lynch, Salter, Cole, and Williamson supported. Commissioner Parker denied, and it passes four to one. Thank you. Item two is a list of meetings. They are all noted for you on hard copy and also on our website. Any changes that we need to note? Hearing none, then I'll move the meeting list without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Economic development, we don't have any items?
Added item number three, the agreement addendum for the tractor for the fair association.
If you all have a copy of that, we approved purchasing a tractor for, out at the Juneteenth Arena and also for the fair. This will be used in conjunction. Basically, what this agreement is, is to keep everybody and their uncle from jumping on top of that tractor and operating it. David Phillips, I'm going to call him Cowboy Dave, because there's two Dave Phillips in East Milton. Dave Phillips, the contractor that does site prep, and then Dave Phillips, my cowboy friend, and David's out there religiously taking care of things at East Milton Park, mainly Juneteenth Arena and the fairgrounds, all volunteer just because he loves the place out there. David will have keys to the tractor, and I'll also have one set of keys to the tractor. Prior to anybody in any other organization using that particular piece of equipment, they will get fully checked out, and the tractor will be checked over, checked out, and checked back in again, because it's a very expensive piece of equipment, and taxpayers' dollars bought it, and we want to keep it in good condition. So, any other comments? Any questions from my fellow board members?
Just one quick question for staff. I know they had explained to me the reason why we were doing this different than lawnmowers because of the, you know, a little bit more complicated to operate, but I didn't see anything in the agreement that talked about what are we requiring of the other person to operate, and I'm just wondering from a...
Anybody other than myself or Dave will be fully checked out on the piece of equipment prior to...
Just, do we, do we need to spell out what that is, or is it just, if you say you drove a tractor before you're good?
No, that...
I mean, I'm just wondering, because I didn't see it anywhere.
The requirement is that they be, one, only one additional person would be allowed, and it would have to be authorized by Chairman Cole and Mr. Phillips, so based on their knowledge of the operator's abilities, I guess?
And again, the only reason I ask it is, I know when we had this conversation over a year ago about lawnmowers, and Stephen brought up, and I appreciate him doing it, about protecting us from liability, was the reason we moved it, and I know we talked about keeping this in-house, protect the equipment, so I was just wondering if, should we not have it spelled out of at least what we're looking at, or is it just purely, as long as we're good?
As far as indemnity, we have an indemnity agreement in the fair agreement, which is incorporated in this agreement, the million-dollar coverage, insurance coverage requirement, so as far as liability, I think that probably takes care of that.
Okay, and I saw there, this chairman said it was him, David Phillips, and it says no more than one other permitted operator. I just didn't know if we needed to have that in there, but I'm good with it. Thank you.
And just for clarification, my thoughts are the tractor comes with an operator's manual. If that third person would be required to read through the operator's manual and then demonstrate the ability to follow that manual. All right? Any other questions? Comments? All right. Move that without objection. Hearing none, it passes. All right. Engineers report, we didn't have anything under economic development that moved to the regular agenda, so engineers report. Mr. Blaylock, are these three items ready for the board to move forward with?
They are, sir.
All right. Any discussion needed on any of them? Anything out of the ordinary? Sir?
No, sir.
Nothing? Okay. All right. Then items number one is Jody Oaks preliminary plat. Item two is Sound Shore's second edition final plat, and item three is Hamilton Crossing construction plans. They all meet engineering requirements as according to our county engineer, and at this time, I'll move item one, two, and three without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Under public services, public works, and budget and finance, we had no items that moved to today's agenda. They were all taken care of the consent agenda, so I'll close those three items. At this time, I'll open a floor to public forum. Anybody from the public would like to speak. Mr. Hawley, long time no see. How are you today?
Good morning.
All right, you've got the podium.
I'm Kyle Hawley. I'm representing the United Way of Santa Rosa County this morning. Our address is 6479 Caroline Street. And so I've just come to give you good news, a snapshot of the work that's happening at the West Gate Trailer Park adjacent to Whiting Field. You may recall that some of the residents addressed you all. So... You may recall that some of the residents addressed, addressed you all. So I will say this, I wanted, in terms of saying thank yous, there were a couple of advocates inside of the county who were watching the meeting, who called me during the meeting and asked me to pay attention to the meeting. And for that, I very much appreciate. Some kudos to your grant department. My office, and specifically within United Way, is also a grants office, and so we enjoy a good communication back and forth with your department. So for that, I appreciate being called attention to it. So United Way does a couple of things. We're, we're, we're old, right? We've been around a long time. Generally, we raise funds, and we make investments into a specific strategy designed to help vulnerable populations. So we make investments in education, we make investments in health, and we make investments in income stability. So our involvement with the West Gate Trailer Park would fall underneath that income stability focus area, right? In this community, there are some charities who are not able to specialize in the unusual. This would certainly be the unusual. Our office and our United Way is able to do that. I would say to you that nothing makes me individually more happy than to get involved in a distress situation like that. It doesn't matter to me if there's garbage. It doesn't matter to me if there's drugs. It doesn't matter to me if there's all sorts of irregularity. The more complicated it is, the better I like it. So I'm here today to report to you that we had 12 families that were there who were experiencing this difficulty when the court ordered the water to be turned off. One of the 12 families, when we met with them as a team, shared that they had enough resources on hand that they could move themselves. That left 11. As of yesterday, we have just two left. The two that are left are the two residents who own their trailers. But I'm also happy to report that with existing pledges and with United Way funds that we had on hand, we're able to meet that need. So I would expect the project to be completely resolved, and those last two residents moved no later than November the first. So, so we just really wanted to share that success. We know that you all were made aware of it, and we know that you cared. And we, we appreciate some of you were able to make investments of time and of money, pledges to help that situation. And for that, we're very thankful. And we just felt like we needed to come and, and share the good news. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman.
I had to ask Dan to ask Kyle to come in and give us an update because that was an emotional meeting when the lady came to us with her dire needs. And I'm just so happy that Kyle Hawley and United Way stepped up and helped these people with a major problem that they couldn't resolve on their own. So I just want to personally say thank you and, and thank you to United Way.
Well, I appreciate that. Our Board of Directors was very clear. Go get involved and, and help the situation and be indiscriminate about it. We have worked with the property owners and with the residents and really, really had a great time working through it. So I appreciate it and thank you for the few minutes to, to share the update. And if you need us in the future for things like that, we can bridge the gap. We're not opposed to getting involved in those, those things, those type things. Thank you. Thank you.
Kyle, if I might, do you have a, perhaps a list of any of the other folks that helped? I know, I think it was Boyettes that brought a couple.
Oh, there, there were some donors who were coming in because of advocacy on your part and on the part of others, prior to us getting really involved. My first action was to go straight to the residents and really have those team meetings, but we did see others coming in. So I do know that Boyettes was involved there. And Green Hut was very nice. Green Hut Construction sent some resources in, and Pine Terrace Church was able to send some resources in. Amongst, there were a wide variety of volunteers that were in and out of the park there, working with folks. And those volunteers and the residents, well, they gave confidence to the residents, which was nice. But also, there were speculators that were in and out and around there. And I would just say at a very inappropriate time, right? And those of us who cared and were working as volunteers were able to handle that diplomatically. You know, now is not the time. Our job is to help these residents move on from here. We protect the privacy of each individual resident that we work with, and we protect the privacy of the landowners. And that, but it was really outstanding teamwork in, in that case. And a kudo to the residents is they chose to, we asked them to self-prioritize. You know, I need you all to decide who's going to get help first, right, with limited resources. They worked together well as a team. They prioritized in the same way that we would have at United Way, senior citizens. There's a, there is also a double amputee there. So those were the top priorities. And then we came down to families with young children and then moved back up to families with a little bit older children. So the, the natural tolerance of the resident to continue living in a difficult situation was managed and just really ran very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, good morning. My name's Tom Beckman. I live at 2415 Naughty Pine Drive in Navarre. I have two items to quickly address today for our community, two roads, Sunrise Drive and Camden, the Camden Road. In Sunrise Drive, we've recently completed a local option sales tax project to improve the entrance to our community from 98. And with the recent tropical storm Gordon rain event, I can report to you that that project appears to be a great success. We filled up, filled up our holding ponds, but we didn't have any flooding at the entrance to the community. That said, our, our stormwater management problems on Sunrise are not solved. The homes immediately north of the entrance leading up to about Manatee continue to experience nuisance flooding in their front yards and driveways to the extent that in some places, we're overtopping the road with, with stormwater. So my question is this, I noted in the engineers' report and the consent agenda that we've, we're letting task orders on design projects, and one of them is, has been or is about to be awarded Jacob CH2M for Sunrise Drive North Drainage Work, Design Work in the amount of $192,000. If, if that is, if that design work is not focused on the homes that are still experiencing flooding, I guess my question is, what are we doing on Sunrise? And why would, what are we doing on Sunrise with that design work?
Mr. Furman, do you want to...
No, I will take that. I would direct Mr. Beckman to the Holly by the Sea Drainage Study conducted by BDI. They identified a specific task, TKB-15, which was Sunrise Drive North Drainage Improvements. And indeed, it is looking at the drainage from the entrance back to Tom King Bayou. Specifically, it mentions culvert upgrades as well as regrading swells and ditches. But we'll have to wait till the final design to see the exact specifics of those improvements.
So I'm hearing, sir, that it's not just the southern sections of Sunrise, but it's the entire length of Sunrise?
Sunrise Drive, and I have it here pulled up, if you'd like to come take a look at the PDF that shows it, but it's essentially from Tom King Bayou South to appears to be... Well, there it comes. Marlin Street is just on the PDF, but it is, those roadside swells were specifically addressed in the study.
The, the homes, the swells, the...
The swell drainage.
On the east-west side for the homes just north of Sunrise will be addressed?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you for clarifying that. The Local Option Sales Tax Project also shows a scoping boundary that is more, is consists of more work than just the entrance to Sunrise Drive. It consists, nominally captured a few driveways and a few homes to the north of that. So between either the BDI study or the Local Option Sales Tax Project scope, I think we've met in the middle with a responsive answer because I'm sure those, we know those homes are frustrated with their continued nuisance flooding adjacent to the, to the entryway. And it's also an impediment to traffic control in there, an emergency response if we ever had to have it. Okay. So much for Sunrise. Camden Road is our next big north-south connector for, for project work, including repaving the road and doing a Baskerville-Donovan design for a drainage project. That project is ongoing, and my understanding is it's completing its design. But we would be interested in knowing what the status of that design work is, Mr. Blaylock, and if there's anything you need from the community. We also have MSBU dollars that are being put in place. They were approved by the board this past Tuesday to repave that, or not to repave, but initially to pave that road. There are extensive sections of Camden that have never been paved. So that's exciting also for the residents in and around Camden and the 60 some odd homes who are members of that MSBU, that they'll finally get a paved road. Obviously, we would hope that the drainage design work being done by BDI would be completed, the construction would be completed before we set about spending a great deal of money to pave, final pave the road. And in the process, I have one more, one more question. We continue to experience a considerable amount of traffic, good behavior decay in our community. We're getting a lot of speeding on our north-south roads. Members are starting to become more and more up in arms about heavy commercial traffic that goes back and forth through the community. And we're actively considering discussing with the board about traffic calming measures that might help us on our existing highway, on our existing roads. For Camden, I would hope that as we decide how we're going to pave this thing after we've properly drained it, we would take into consideration the option for possibly implementing traffic control, traffic calming design features on the finished Camden Road, because in all probability, it'll eventually need it. We've got Heather's Place being built to our west, and we've got the new elementary school and school complex going in up in our northwest corner. All of our northwest roads are going to experience considerable increases in their traffic. And as we finish up Camden, it'd be cheaper and easier and make more sense to incorporate traffic calming measures now before we, while we're finishing drainage and as we begin to pave. And we're not just talking speed bumps. We're talking consideration of traffic circles or chicanes or other, or other engineered features that compel traffic calming, traffic calming behavior. Not at all unlike the traffic study that has just been completed for the sports complex up in Pace. So that's my, those are my two items for today, Mr. Chairman, those two roads.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
If I could, Tom, the award, the design for Camden Drive is 100% complete. The construction award for Phase One, the bids are in, and that will be presented to the board at the next meeting, selection of a construction contractor to complete Phase One construction of that project.
Thanks, Dan. So maybe my petition to consider some traffic calming redesign elements might be a bit late. This horse might have left, might have left the barn. But I propose it to you as an idea for, there's no better time to try and think of those alternatives than now before we actually put a bulldozer or a road grader on the project. So I offer it for the, for the county engineer's consideration. But thank you, Dan.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Tom, I, I think this is a great time to talk about some long-term solutions. And I love the idea of incorporating roundabouts. I thought that what was provided with West Spencer Field and the traffic study there, and the folks that I heard come forward and watching the review of the meeting, talking about how we need to make investments and not be, I wouldn't say shortsighted, but maybe just putting a Band-Aid on it. And because of fiscal restraints that we've had in the past, maybe not being able to do a more robust, long-term solution. So I would love to see us look at some roundabouts or other ways of doing creative traffic calming to take care of the amount of growth that we have there now and the growth that's still coming. And so, yeah, I would welcome any of that.
Let me, let me comment on that, Mr. Williams, if I may. Our vice president for the north side of town, Mike McKinney, is in the process with our Board of Directors approval, standing up a committee that will specifically look at issues associated with traffic safety in the, in the community, in the entire 5,000-family community. They're going to take some time to get cranked up, and we're proceeding forward at a rapid pace and doing a lot of infrastructure improvements in, in the, in the community. And for that, I thank the board for their investment in our, in our drainage and infrastructure needs. Those are vital to us. But when we get our grassroots effort going, we're looking for a strong and continuous collaborative dialogue with the county on how, how we keep that infrastructure improving. It's really dated technologies in many cases.
And the new district commissioner that'll be taken over in November is here, and I'm sure that he'd be willing to listen to those ideas as well.
Sounds like a, sounds like a great plan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. It's the kind of input that the board needs to hear from our citizens. Anybody else?
Wilbert Courtney, 4641 Geiger Road, Milton, Florida. And I have two questions. I see where you spend a million dollars here and a million dollars there, and I think it's wonderful that you do on parks. And it's great. I'd like to ask the question, when are we ever going to clean up Pond Creek so people can go swimming again at Highway 90? And Pond Creek, where you've got pavilions, you've got picnic tables, you've got barbecue pits, but nobody uses them because they can't go swimming. When are we ever going to clean up Pond Creek again? I know there's supposed to be BP money coming, but I, I've never seen any yet released. But if that would help, that would be a good thing to do, too, is to use that part of it, a million, to clean up Pond Creek so people can go swimming in it.
I can appreciate your comments because my wife reflects often when we cross there, how many times she got paddled for going to Pond Creek when she wasn't supposed to. So, because they lived up on Galt City Road. But I'd like to see us do something with that. But unfortunately, you know, the septic tanks that, you know, leach into that, and some of the pastures and stuff that leach into it have caused this situation. And I think as a board as we can, you know, apply for projects and grant money and even BP money to try to alleviate some of the septic tanks, I believe would be probably the quickest way to do it. But I know of no formal study that we've ever done. We often see that it's posted, not to be able to do that, or not to be able to swim in there, but certainly something that I believe would be a good subject for us to take a look at.
Well, I would appreciate it. And I asked about 20 years ago, but I never got any results from it. And I would like to let my commissioner know, the little bear and the mama bears back. They've been in, across the street from my house and in my yard. And they are back. Also, I'd like to bring up a subject that has been postponed at the present time, and that's for Commissioner Parker, is how in the world can you build 700 houses on Woodbine Road without four-laning it? Because right now, if you go out there at the wrong time, you can hardly get up and down Woodbine Road. Commissioner Salter will have to leave on Wednesday night to come to a county commissioner meeting if he, if he, if he goes down Woodbine Road. I just, I, you know, I don't expect a thorough answer, but I'm sure Commissioner, Engineer Blaylock could tell you, I assume it'd cost 20, 30 million dollars to four-lane, or Woodbine Road, and I don't know how you can afford it.
Well, I appreciate the question, and I think it's good that we keep it on the forefront. And, yeah, I've told the story even in this boardroom about the first time I ever had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Furman. That was one of my questions, is what's the plan for Woodbine? And I definitely, I think, the rezoning request that was brought forward, even though it's been withdrawn, has brought, stirred up a lot of emotion in the Pace area, which is, you know, probably rightfully so. There's, there's folks that every morning and afternoon are stuck in traffic and, and they're not thinking, I don't think in my mind at that time that, hey, we're glad fire departments get more money, or we're glad sheriffs get more money, or we're glad drainage is getting fixed. They're thinking, I'm stuck in this traffic and I'm tired of it. And I tell you that my, my answer I give you, and I am humbly and openly looking for better ideas or suggestions. I've put it in front of the board. I've mentioned this before, and I'll tell you, I am hoping that this board will support it. The best I've come up with is that we'll support going back to the citizens in the latter part of next year and asking for an additional half cent sales tax on a special election. I think that just this testimony that was given here today shows that what we've been able to do with a half cent, and if we can capture that other half... do with a half-cent, and if we can capture that other half-cent like Escanbia County does, then we would be able to address projects like that. The most recent figure that I was given from a Baskerville Donovan Engineering update was $29 million to do that project. You know, and that covers, we've got to have right-of-way acquisition, we've got to build retention for that surface water runoff, and then, of course, we've got the pavement to overcome. So, with that $30 million, I haven't seen in my first two years here where we could pull that out of the budget at current revenue expenditures, I'm sorry, current revenue collection. So, that's the best plan I have, is that if the citizens are truly concerned with infrastructure, which I believe they are, I constantly hear about it on a weekly basis, we all hear about it from throughout the county, now hopefully the citizens will see what we're doing with that money, such as what was testified here today on Sunrise Drive, and give us that other half-cent to work with. And I know from the figures, if we could have that one cent for 10 years, that's 160-plus million dollars, we could immediately start on Woodbine Road and other projects. However, I'll give you a complete answer. If it's a citizens' vote no on that sales tax, I think we're probably past the point of using that as an excuse not to do it. And I think that then this board will, hopefully through the knowledge and wisdom that's been gained through many years of some of the commissioners that's been here, be able to address, you know, how will we do that? Because I don't think the citizens are happy with the answer of, you know, hey, we're going to hope to do it, and one day, but not yet. But that's the best plan I can give you. And I absolutely, humbly yield that response to anybody else that has something better, but that's the best that I've been able to come up with.
Well, I'm glad it's in your area rather than in mine.
And I'm glad you brought up mama and Papa bear because, Dan, if you will, we, I asked several questions of Florida Wildlife months ago, and we got the typical rattle your pans and put up fences and keep your garbage closed up answer. I still haven't got an answer as to why, what their long-term plan is, what are we going to do? Because, you know, that's, that's a legislative thing, that's a state thing on how to handle that. Or have I had an answer as to why we can't transport these bears to states that would like to have them, and repopulate some of the states, Kentucky, Tennessee, that want them back in the mountains again? And if we could follow up on that and maybe get some answers?
Yes, sir. I've spoken with Fish and Wildlife. They're willing to come and give a presentation to the board. I'd request you can make that happen in the next meeting, probably.
We could see if their presentations changed any, or else we could just replay a meeting that they had a year ago with the same little, you know, rattle your pans and new fences and lock up your trash. But that's still not an address every year, mama bears having baby bears and teaching them to forage in the trash cans instead in the woods. So, I'd like to know if there is something at a state level that's a long-term plan. How do we, how do we slow down this population growth? How do, you know, because we're encroaching more and more on, on the areas they live. There just needs to be more, more of a long-term plan in effect.
Well, and you can't put out your garbage until supposedly the morning the garbage comes. Well, you know, that becomes a little hard when you start getting 80 years old, that you can't have it out by the road at 7, 8 o'clock in the morning.
We all got to work together on this, but we can't, I don't think it's, I think it's incumbent on us before somebody gets attacked, or a child gets killed, or something to keep our, keep the pressure on the state to come up with a plan of action that's going to be more long-term and more effective than what we've been told.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank all the county commissioners for listening to me. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Seeing nobody else in the audience, or other commissioners, we're adjourned.